Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Pauls, or Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I don't know if it's coincidence or just how the rotation works, but it seems as though every year about when school starts that the invocation has been mine to give, so I always like to give a reminder to those here and who may be watching at home that as our children are going back to school, many of them the little ones, they don't always remember to look before they cross the street. So we should be extra careful to look out for the little children going to and from school. Sometimes they just don't look, sometimes they're distracted in their excitement with their little friends and we want to try to avoid any child getting hurt going to and from school and I know I see a lot of it living near three schools, two different elementaries and a high school, even the high schoolers don't always look before they're crossing, so. There was a company where I grew up that had on the front of every one of their company vehicles, watch that child and that's what it was all about, trying to make sure children don't get hit by cars, so. Let's keep, try to keep that in mind and be a little safer as we go to and about, especially when school's about to start and it's about to get out for the end of the day. Thanks.
Yeah, this yesterday.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous community service programs for MAPPA by $10,000 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense, contingency account transfers by $10,000.
There's no public hearing.
No public hearing.
Okay. Just to briefly give people an understanding of what this particular budget amendment is about, we usually, we are part of MAPPA, which is a regional organization and there are a number of cities and towns around the metro that contribute to MAPPA and last year we gave them $20,000. They asked us again for 40. It had been reduced to 10 and for purposes of helping them to at least continue to, continue their vision for what they want to do with 2050 and other items. I thought it important to at least give them the same amount of money that they had last year and then review kind of where they are over the next year, so. With that, I would ask my council members, my colleagues on the council for support. There's a more. Second, there are no lights roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, five to two. Item seven, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous community service programs for PACE by $10,000 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense, contingency account transfers by $10,000.
Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I brought this forward with some support from others already and I was thinking of something to equate this to and I guess the easiest thing I came up to and maybe Rich would agree with this too. It's an early childhood development is the most important thing in education and I think what PACE is doing within the community, which I see a lot, is they're grabbing a hold of these youth, more importantly, the youth that are at risk, getting them off the street, showing them maybe a different path, keeping them in the right direction, so. With that being said, we would like to give them even more money than this, like many of the organizations we know, but this is great for them and I'm sure they would appreciate it and with that, I would ask to approve this.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, I just agree with Mr. Palermo's remarks and I think in addition to all the protective things our officers are doing with the kids in this respect, I think it's also notable as a community relations tool and a violence prevention tool that's important, I think, in departments all across the country now and especially during these times and that was the notion behind when we first introduced supporting them in 2016 with $20,000 that everyone supported. I was pleased to see the mayor suggest 25,000 in this budget, but I'm fully supportive of adding the 10,000 to make it 35, realizing that the vast majority of their funding is still private. It's just an indication of the city's support for what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve item seven, there are no roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous community service programs for the Reconnect program by $10,000 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense, contingency account transfers by $10,000.
Thank you. The councilmember Jerem and myself wanted to introduce this budget amendment. One of the things we have monitored and witnessed on several occasions, as has councilmember Pauls, is the work that is being done by the Reconnect organization under Levon Stennis-Williams. They have done tremendous amount of work, especially with their reentry program and their reconnect with individuals, helping them to find work, especially in the construction trades and so. We have given them money in the past, we've increased it, we increased it last year, we wanted to increase it by another $10,000 this year because when you have an organization that is doing, you know, pretty much a lot of the work that we want to see done, especially with those who are coming back in our society, who have made mistakes but want to get those corrected, I think this is one of the, one of the better programs in the community that is working very well to get that done. They're about at a, when they, when they're involved in their reconnect efforts, they have about a 78% placement rate, which is phenomenal and so. With that, I would urge the council to support this item as well. Those are my comments, Mr. Jerem. Oh, Mr. Festerson. I didn't see it, I didn't see it.
Thanks, Mr. President, I would second the motion and I'll just include short remarks on this item, which also I think pertain to the next item that I also support, which is I'm glad we're finding the ability to fund some of these organizations that are doing such important work in the community. I think this budget does reflect our prioritization of addressing health, economic disparities and poverty in the community, as well as violence prevention. Those are some of the most important priorities I think we can be emphasizing in a budget and a budget is what reflects the city's priorities overall, so. I think both this item and the next item are complementary to things like the million dollars that are already in the budget for the Step Up Program and some groups like Compassion and Action, they're doing great work, so I'll be supportive of this and also enhanced funding to Workforce, Heartland Workforce Solutions. Thank you.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, I would just point out that organizations like the Heartland Reconnect who take prisoners who are ex-cons, felons coming out of our prison systems, who don't want to return to a life of crime, who want to be productive citizens, who want to be given the opportunity to work, are the most challenging in many cases to serve because the stigma of their past lives for which they were incarcerated follows them in many cases for the rest of their life and so they're the most difficult and challenging group to try to get other people to raise funds to try to support these programs because they're, you know, criminals who've done these such horrible things in some cases. Programs like Reconnect take, as I said, people who want to work, who don't want to go back to their past lives but who, if they don't have opportunities like this, are often trapped in a cycle that gets them back to where they came from and back around the same people they were hanging around with and then back into the system, which then because of new crimes, you have this revolving door in and out of the prisons. So Heartland Reconnect came along and they've taken people who demonstrated through benchmarks that they have to achieve, they're clean, they're sober, they're tested and through its success of about, I think it's 78% success of getting people placed and in jobs for longer periods of time and not going back into the system, not reoffending, support from major employers in town like the Kiwits, the Hawkins, the Lund Rosses and when you have for such a little bit of investment from the city, the opportunity to have such dramatic success, keeping people out of going back into the system, keeping them out and away from reoffending in those temptation situations where those things happen, I think it's worthy of the investment of the city. And as we invest ever so slightly more, it gives powerful example to other potential funding sources that this is a worthy investment, it is worthy of their contribution and support to this nonprofit. So it happens to be in my district, based primarily out of the Center Mall, but now they're talking about getting into some, with their life skills part of their program, some housing opportunities so that they don't have the challenges initially out of, coming out of the jail to try to find rent. They're teaching them all kinds of things about taking care of a building, a home, mowing your yard, keeping the upkeep up. For a lot of these guys coming out of the jail, they just didn't have that. So this is a wonderful program and it's worthy of our support and I'm happy to co-sponsor it with you.
It's been moved and seconded to support item number eight, there are no further lights roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous community service programs for Heartland Workforce Solutions by $20,000 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense, contingency account transfers by $20,000.
Item nine is another item that councilmember Jerem and I co-sponsored. This is one with Heartland Workforce Solutions and this is an effort to address those who are chronically unemployed, who have been employed for a long time or generational unemployment and they have put together what I think is an excellent program to address some of what we want to see happen with those who have been unemployed for a long period of time. I think it's, again, this is another one of those beneficial programs that I think, at least me personally, I'd like to see a lot more money go to it if we could do that, but staying within budgetary constraints, I think what we've done here with $20,000 to help them move the project along, I think is another drop in the bucket that helps them continue to move forward. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, and just some of the highlights, I forgot to bring with me the link where anyone can go online and see the detailed report that Heartland Workforce Solutions has prepared, but it's, you can find it on the state's Department of Labor website. Working on getting them to get this up on their own website so that we don't have to do that step to go find the details. But this program came out of a project to create a nonprofit where the city took back its workforce development needs from the state where 60 cents of every dollar by contract was given from the city to the state just in administering workforce development. So only 40 cents of your tax dollars went actually into delivering services. So this council, nearly all the members, I think we have a couple new ones who weren't there then, but we created a nonprofit called Heartland Workforce Solutions, HWS. And in this entity, what it's been doing at the American Jobs Center on Ames Street is remarkable with what limited funding that they've had. This program of addressing chronic underemployment and unemployment, I think I heard at one time has about 2,000 people a month going through their doors wanting to work or who are employed but underemployed, looking for a job that would pay their bills without having to have more than one job. And it's a very challenging group, again, to represent because of the skills deficits that many of them have. So when working with major employers in town, working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with the foundations and nonprofits with expertise in this area, they've developed a program that gets the people who are chronically unemployed and underemployed, the skills deficits that they have identified so that then the programs and the partners for Heartland Workforce Solutions can then have those skills addressed. When you have a community like Omaha that has such low levels of unemployment as a city but high pockets of the city with high unemployment, it's incumbent upon us to get the people that live in those census tracts with high unemployment the skills that they need so that they can get the work to help support them because they want to be taxpayers, they don't want to be tax consumers, they don't want to be on government aid programs if they don't have to be. They don't want to have to go through food stamps and other programs. And Heartland, just in the first several months, in January 16, since then, there's been over 600 people chronic unemployed that have come through this specific career readiness program to get skills deficits identified and then get into the programs to get them going in the right steps. So this modest incremental increase, although small a number, that we're seeking to add and I would applaud the mayor for her budgetary appropriation increase to begin with, this just leverages so much more for an entity like HWS and so that's why I support it and would make the motion to approve.
Second. There are no further lights, oh, Mr. Harding.
Thanks. I just want to, I applaud the efforts of the group and I noted that, you know, for 2017, we gave $440,000 to this organization. The recommended budget was 500,000, which is a 13 and a half increase, 13 and a half percent increase over 2017. Now the additional 20% if approved, it's going to be an 18% increase. I think, you know, the city's shown good support for this program and I was comfortable with the $60,000 increase of the recommended budget. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I guess if it gives any relief to those who have seen the number, Ben asked for 500,000 increase originally and I asked for 150,000 increase, so. If that, if that doesn't give you a roll age relief moment, I don't know, but I appreciate your position.
Thank you, there are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to approve item nine, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, five to two. Item 10, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund in the city clerk department by $17,697 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense contingency account transfers by $17,697.
Second. Just a little bit of background on item 10, item 10 is going to be just a, it's a one-time amount of money that will come out of this contingency account. A study was done this past year on salaries for clerk, deputy clerk and other areas of city government and it was determined that these amounts were appropriate to at least make us continue to be competitive as a city with our staff here at City Hall. And so this was a one-time amount and by the time, by the time the figures came back, the budget had already been printed. So this will be a line item in the regular city budget next year, but for purposes of cleaning up and getting caught up, this would be, this would be a one-time amount of money that would come out of the contingency fund to catch us up so that our city clerk and deputy clerk are compatible with other cities of like size. So I would encourage the city council's support on this. If I can get a motion. Oh, there is a motion in a second and there are no lights roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President. Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 budget to increase the general fund in the Parks, Recreation and Public Property Department, Parks Facilities Division by $100,000 and by decreasing appropriations from the general fund and other budgetary accounts miscellaneous contingency liability expense, contingency account transfers by $100,000. A is communications and support, B is communication submitted by Mayor Gene Stotter.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, so just a little bit of background on number 11, which is also related to number 15. I'm not seeking to do both of them, I was just seeking to provide options for the council to consider as to a project that I think should be prioritized in our city capital improvement plan and/or budget. And a little bit of background, so this proposal would help renovate the World War II monument and the Korea-Vietnam monument at Memorial Park. As you probably all know, the World War II colonnade there honors more than 900 military members from Douglas County who died serving their country in World War II and was first dedicated by President Truman in 1948. The separate statue and pedestal dedicated in 1976 honors local residents who died during the Korean and Vietnam wars and was last renovated in 1997. Both have experienced significant wear and tear, I know I've shared photos with everyone here and it's obvious the maintenance and work that needs to get accomplished in order to honor our veterans in a way they should be honored. But it also came to my attention, not just because I live nearby and have noticed it deteriorate over time, but a constituent actually contacted me after Memorial Day and said they attended the Memorial Day ceremony, which was always very impressive and we all get up there and have a ceremony for that and for Veterans Day and typically 9/11 that's coming up, but observed that they felt it was somewhat embarrassing, the condition of the colonnade with the bubbling and the peeling paint and the tuck pony that needs to get done and certainly that applies to the Korea-Vietnam statue itself, to the point where this must get addressed as soon as possible. Upon further research and upon engaging American Legion Post One, it came to my attention that the colonnade in particular has its 70th anniversary in 2018 from the day it was first dedicated by President Truman and it would sure seem like a worthy goal to me to try and get things done in time for that. I know I have a couple of members of the American Legion Post One that are here, they were here last week too, so I wanted to give them just a chance to come down and say something real quick if you want to talk about the project. And to start with your name and address for the record there.
134. And thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I know I don't have to express the importance and the impact that Memorial Park has in Omaha, not, you know, including all the sponsored events that go there, but the free open park that on any sunny evening, you can go by and see families enjoying that space. And it's very vital that we honor and remember our American heroes, more so our local heroes. And it's just as important that we preserve that memory for generations to come, so those heroes are not forgotten. So I just wanted to come forward and say that as part of American Legion Post One, we fully support the renovation and upkeep of these monuments in Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
My name's Dave Smith, I live at 17011 Cedar Plaza, Apartment 1C, Omaha. 68130. I am a past commander of American Legion Post One. I'm also a past commander of the Area A. Our state in Nebraska is broke up into four areas, I was one of, got to probably be an Area A commander. And I'm just here to say that the American Legion backs councilman for his efforts in redoing, rebuilding the monument at Memorial Park. It, I don't know how to say it without getting mushy, but it does tear at your heart to see the condition that that has deteriorated to and hopefully we can get it, get it back up to where everybody is proud of it, with our veterans and everything. And one side note, that in 2019, both the American Legion nationally and American Legion Post One will be 100 years old and we are looking forward to having our ceremonies at Memorial Park with our veterans behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your service as well and I understand American Post, American Legion Post One is already mobilizing some contributions from its membership, which we really appreciate to this effort too. I think it's best done as a public-private partnership, as all great products have been done in the park there, but also across the city. So after I initiated my conversations with the post, I also met with the Parks Director to go about fashioning an amendment to the budget or to the capital improvement plan that I thought could be workable and not negatively impact any other projects currently in the queue. Rather just prioritize this so we can go about raising the rest of the money needed to get this done. So that's what you had before you today is a capital improvement plan amendment, which is number 15, that could do it through parks bonds or this item of number 11, which does it through a contingency fund, which is consistent with the previous items you just discussed. Based on our conversations this morning with the Parks Director and with, in our pre-council meeting, I think the preference would be to go with number 11. And I think it is my preference to go with number 11 because I think we do need the line item to show that the city council is prioritizing this upon which to raise the private money necessary to match it. In my experience, that's what donors are looking for, some city participation and frankly, I think that's our responsibility in this case. And if we do this, this is a $350,000 project altogether. $100,000 from the city, I think the rest can easily be raised privately, given my conversations with donors and philanthropy to date. I would also note, the Parks Director of course wants to get this done, I think we all do, so I commend him for his work towards that and towards other monuments and parks in our city and would also note that he is a veteran himself. So I really see this as something everyone can support and get on board with and to the extent there's a bigger picture of renovating other monuments with philanthropy, I'm on board with that too. I want to be as helpful as I can to that greater picture as well, but just think I need the reassurance that Memorial Park can happen in 2018, which I think is provided by this line item in number 11. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and move number 11.
It's been moved and seconded to move item 11, Ms. Melton.
Whenever I talk about Memorial Park since Christmas, I think of the absolutely beautiful Christmas time display that Brooke did for the veterans this year. It was in the evening, decorating Memorial Park with the Christmas lights at the monument was absolutely spectacular. So Brooke, I want to, I want to thank you for that and I know that this is something that you care about a lot. You are a veteran, I believe your father was, was there as well at that first lighting. It was really an honor to meet him and it was, it was a wonderful ceremony, I hope everybody's able to attend it this year. And Brooke, I know this isn't something that you necessarily needed to be put on here to attract your attention because this is something that's been on your radar for quite some time and that you were working on. So if I could just ask your thoughts, I know you care about the veterans parks all over the city and really have them as a priority, but even if we give this money, what I don't want to do is to put you in a position where if this doesn't happen, it's going to be your fault. I think you told us earlier, the entire statue may not be able to get done because there are other things that maybe need to happen, other people, so you could do some of the maintenance to it, but you may not be able to get it done in 2018. Could you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. The colonnade is more of a maintenance issue and we're aware of a lot of the facial structure that needs to be done. We did do fix, we did fix a little of that last year when we were hanging the Christmas lights for the event last year. We know there's more, but that's more of a maintenance issue that I think that we, we will, we've already started working on, I've already had some staff out there, we're getting more estimates, some current estimates to see what we're going to need to be able to get done to get the colonnade fixed. As far as the Korean statue, that is something that we need to work with the Art Commission. It has to be, it is, I'm not going to lie, it is in bad shape, it needs to be fixed and addressed, but we also have to work with the artist, the designer, the family and there's many steps that will take place. I will do everything in my power to try to have that done by the 70th year anniversary, but again, with a lot of project but again, with a lot of projects that we've had in the past, to make a guarantee, I just, I'm not at the point where I could say that I can for sure guarantee that that's going to be done. It's going to be a major project. It's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollar project. I will do everything in my power to get it done, but there's no way that I could make a guarantee to say that that's going to be done for sure.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to make the public aware of that, that I don't want it to look like you didn't do that, and I know that Memorial Park and Heartland Park and all of the other veterans, places and parks that we have are your, are your priority. And so I just wanted, I wanted to make sure to make that clear in case it wasn't done, that it wouldn't necessarily, the blame shouldn't necessarily fall on you. And I want to thank you for everything that you've done, and I do hope everybody comes out this Christmas. It was beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and I would agree with that. I think what this does is provides the prioritization of this and the overall mix of projects in 2018, and I think it does ensure that the colonnade gets repaired in 2018, which is the one with the 70th anniversary. Ideally, it happens at all the same time, but if there are steps necessary along the way to deal with the statue and the monument that somehow require additional steps or that are part of the bigger picture of maybe doing all of our parks, that's something I'm certainly open to and flexible about. So I'm flexible in how this gets done. I just want to make sure that it does get done. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item, item 11 roll call.
Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Rich. Okay. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You know, in some ways, we do have an issue here, but isn't it nice to have an issue how we are trying to correct something as opposed to some of our cities across the United States where there, there are people campaigning to take down statues? It's really nice to know that we are concerned about what's going on here. And just recently, I went to a movie called The Dunker. I don't know if you've seen that or not. Sometimes it suggests that maybe we should, so then we can reflect on this. I had the opportunity as a young man in a small town, being mentored by soldiers, and at that time, these were men, because, well, just dealing with war at that time. I was mentored by men who were, who had fought in World War II and Korean War, and I'd seen what it had done to some of them. In fact, my hometown, we had a person who walked the streets, and they said, well, he had shell shock. Well, today, we know better than shell shock. So I think there are a number of people that we have forgotten, and by trying to make these parks, statues, memorials, to upgrade them seems to me a logical thing to do. And what I am hearing now is that we are, as a city, are committed to making that happen. But what I need to know now from, from Council Festerman, is this needed to guarantee it? What's, what's your basis for wanting us to vote on this right now?
Yes, in my opinion, it is needed to move this project forward. As I mentioned, I think that philanthropy is interested in this and probably interested in the greater picture, but this will accelerate that work, I think, and get it on their radar screen, and also answers the question about, is the city participating? In my experience, whether it's been raising $2.5 million for Dundee, $2 million for Benson, $340,000 for the Dot Street Overpass just getting completed right now, one of the first questions you always get is, how is the city participating in this effort before you can fundraise the rest? And I think this helps provide that step for us to be able to do.
Okay. And we discussed this morning, if money can be found, this money does not need to be spent, then?
Right. That's true. Should, should the bigger discussion here or bigger contribution to all monuments or war memorials in the city be successful, say, in the next six months, and they're all happening together, that would be fantastic, and this, this money would not have to be spent, but it does prioritize it in the budget and is available in 18 if needed.
Okay. And one reason why this sort of touches me, because I feel sort of compelled like this, because my granddad happened to serve on the draft committee, and he was one of the guys, he was one of the people who sent people off to war. And so he, I can remember, as I was growing up, he always made the comment, he called me Richard. He said, "Richard, you cannot forget all of these individuals who have helped you be what you're going to be in the future." This is many years ago. So it, to me, this is an emotional thing for me. So if we do pass this, if we do not need the money, the money stays here, and life is good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. There are no more lights. Moved and seconded to approve item 11. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2018 budget as listed on the agenda due to the areas annexed into the city effective August 30th, 2017.
Moved to approve. Second, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to confirm on the record the discussion we had in Finance Committee this morning. This is what is otherwise a routine annexation amendment that gets added to the budget every year, but within this, it's a particular line item that addresses an issue we raised a few weeks ago, and I think that we resolved, that adds back $343,000 to the demolition budget to the city's spending so that we can, in fact, still support the land bank at the same level as last year, while we hope they can also raise money to enhance our demolition effort over the next few years. So just wanted to confirm for those that have been watching this issue that that is, in fact, within this item, right? Mr. Curtis?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 12. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
Public hearing on that. Mr. Festerson, or you, Mr. Jerome?
I just wanted to make a comment about what this is. This does not mean that we're, we're going to use this authority. It's just something that the Finance Department and the mayor, as long as I've been here, have asked for the leeway to have that authority should it ever be needed, and they don't think it'll be needed, but it's there if they, if they want it. So that's what we're voting on now.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the 2018 budget of the City of Omaha is submitted to the City Council by the Mayor and the Finance Director of the City of Omaha, together with revisions adopted by the City Council at this meeting.
Moved and seconded to approve item 14. No lights. Or, Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Curtis, I'd like to have, could you give me the approximate number of our budget? The dollar amount approximately?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. It's a general fund of approximately $386 million, total budget of about $904 million.
Okay, so $386 million. And the reason why I wanted to make that statement is because we have made some adjustments. If you take a look at what we approved today, I think we approved everything that was in front of us. It was actually very minimal compared to a budget of $386 million. I think we ought to commend the mayor and her staff in providing a budget that we actually said yes to in a very high degree, because we made very few, to me, as I look at the money, very, very few adjustments. So I do want to thank the mayor and you, Mr. Curtis, for your work to make this budget what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
That's all.
Oh. Moving seconded. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 to 2023 capital improvement program to increase the 2014 Parks and Recreation Bond Memorial Park Facility renovation appropriations by $100,000 and other local assistance memorial park facility renovation by $250,000. A is communications and support. B is communications submitted by Mayor Gene Stotter.
Motion is dropped. Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1247 South 16th Street from G.I. to R5. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1247 South 16th Street from G.I. to R5. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone properties located at 3001 and 3003 North 16th Street from R7 to G.C. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 39th and 11th Streets from G.I. to R4. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a revision to the recommended 2018 to 2023 capital improvement program to increase the 2014 Parks and Recreation Bond Memorial Park Facility renovation appropriations by $100,000 and other local assistance memorial park facility renovation by $250,000. A is communications and support. B is communications submitted by Mayor Gene Stotter.
Motion is dropped. Second. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve the 2018 to 2023 capital improvement program with revisions evidenced by resolutions adopted by the City Council at this meeting. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I might do that in a second, but have my light on?
Oh, you're light on. I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson.
Just a quick question from Mr. Fanslaw. So there's been a lot of change at 60th and Sorensen with products on, on two of these corners, this being what has been an auto body shop that I think is, is seeking to be auto sales as well, but in that process, we're establishing a major commercial corridor overlay district that will require them to landscape that property and make that corner a lot nicer. Mr. Fanslaw, this is the final step in that process, right?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I believe so. The MCC was a follow-up to their special use permit they applied for.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 21. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21, an ordinance to rezone property located at 6321 North 51st Avenue from R4 to R5 and R6 to R6. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I might do that in a second, but have my light on?
Oh, you're light on. I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson.
Just a quick question from Mr. Fanslaw. So there's been a lot of change at 60th and Sorensen with products on, on two of these corners, this being what has been an auto body shop that I think is, is seeking to be auto sales as well, but in that process, we're establishing a major commercial corridor overlay district that will require them to landscape that property and make that corner a lot nicer. holding up the building permit for the construction of the building, so.
So one of the negative impressions that your project would give if you were to proceed on that course would be that you're basically proceeding to demolish the neighborhood without having had a public meeting. That's the way some people in the neighborhood would perceive that, and then I would hear about it.
Right.
In a rather vocal way.
But we had a, we had a public meeting in, with the Planning Board.
Right. So I guess since this morning when there was a spirit of cooperation and willingness to lay over, are you telling me now you've had a change of heart in that regard, or you no longer wish to do that?
No, if the owner was in place and said we're willing to delay that, I didn't get that exact communication back to me. He's unavailable at a different meeting this afternoon, so I'm here filling in for him, so.
Okay. Well, I'm going to give you an opportunity to say yes.
Yes.
Okay. And move to lay over for three weeks and continue the public hearing with the understanding that you will advertise a public meeting to the neighborhood at large.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved, I'll second that. There are no further lights on item number twenty. Roll call. Layover for three weeks.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item twenty-one, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC to include the property located at six-zero-zero-five Sorensen Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I might do that in a second, but have my light on?
Oh, you're light on, I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson.
Just a quick question from Mr. Fansal. So there's been a lot of change at Sixtieth and Sorensen with products on two of these corners, this being what has been an auto body shop that I think is seeking to be auto sales as well. But in that process, we're establishing a major commercial corridor overlay district that will require them to landscape that property and make that corner a lot nicer. Mr. Fansal, this is the final step in that process, right?
Dave Fansal, City Planning, I believe so. The MCC was a follow-up to their special use permit they applied for.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion approved.
Moved in second to approve item twenty-one. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, an ordinance to rezon property located at six-three-two-one North Fifty-first Avenue from R-four, thirty-five, and R-six to R-six. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two approved, seven to zero. Items twenty-three and twenty-four relate to the same project, a Blackstone Corner. Item twenty-three, an ordinance to rezon the property located northwest of Thirty-six and Farnum Streets from R-eight and G.C. to NBD. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-four, an ordinance to approve a P.U.R. and an NBD located northwest of Thirty-six and Farnum Streets and to approve the development plan. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-three and twenty-four, today. Proponents, please.
Tom McClay, thirty-eight fourteen Farnum Street in Omaha. I'm here on behalf of the developer. We have a fairly extensive Planning Board meeting on this that we heard from some different folks, so I thought I'd just say I'm here to answer some questions if there's any and hope, request your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, before I make the motion to approve, I just wanted to say I acknowledge the meeting and sometimes success when building upon more successes becomes too successful in the eyes of some, and the change happens so quickly in a neighborhood that the neighborhood needs time to catch up. But the projects that you've been working on in this area and your development team, partners have been along the mass transit corridors, which are so critically important to our city, and it's trying to reestablish the densities that once existed in the urban core and that you're working so hard and committed so much of your time, talent, treasure with your partners to do. It also helps us build a more robust mass transit system, alternative transit, and provides the densities in walkable neighborhoods that achieve so many of the goals that the city's doing. And so while there have been a few people who live by that are concerned about the densities, you are fulfilling important goals of the city, and I think long-term, as we look back, it'll be significant in terms of evaluating your contribution to that role. So I would make a motion to approve, and thank you for that.
Moved in second to approve items twenty-three and twenty-four. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-three and twenty-four approved, seven to zero. Items twenty-five and twenty-six relate to the same project, S.C.B.C. Restaurant. Item twenty-four, an ordinance to rezon property located at fifteen-forty North Saddle Creek Road from G.C. to NBD. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-six, an ordinance to approve a P.U.R. and an NBD located at fifteen-forty North Saddle Creek Road and to approve the development plan. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communication and support.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-five and twenty-six, are today. Proponents, please.
Jeff Hubby, one-three-five-one-six, Miranda Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-four-four. Just wanted to be here for any questions or concerns on the item at hand.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jeff, if you would, thanks for coming down. I wanted to give you a chance to talk about the product a little bit, because I think it is a really special one, the Saddle Creek Breakfast Club, right? I want to give you a chance to talk about what you're doing there, both in terms of the building renovation that we toured together and also the menu in which you're planning for the corner there.
I might bring Chase down for that. Partner Chase Thompson's up here, who actually will be doing the cooking, but we just had a blighted building that we didn't know what to deal with, and we came up with a plan to create a nice little community spot where people could enjoy the park as well as walk around the neighborhood, maybe bring some foot traffic back down towards Saddle Creek a little bit more to the east. So far, it's just going to be a breakfast, lunch spot, really nice outdoor seating area that'll really be family-friendly, food-forward, possibly dogs on the patio and all that. So it's just all about the community, basically.
Yeah, I agree, and when you see the letter of support we have here from Metcalf Harrison Neighborhood Association, you've done a great job of engaging them, and now, I think, creating a spark where we're engaging all the rest of the business owners there too in a conversation about the North Saddle Creek Business District that I think is overdue, but on its way now. I look forward to seeing the possibilities that happen there. When you think about this area and you think about the stalwarts for long periods of time, Sergeant Peffers and the Homie and Janus X and all the possibilities we have there to make that something special, I'm really pleased to see this move forward and pleased to see that you're pursuing the P.U.R. zoning and the neighborhood business district zoning too, which I think is an important part of what that can be.
Yeah, and we just had another meeting as business owners this last week, so it is moving forward and there's some interest. There's actually some turnover that could actually provide some expediting of that being a potential thing of new ownership, new blood in the area. So I think it's going well.
Perhaps the next Benson or the next Dundee.
Something.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for your work, and I'd motion to approve.
Moved in second to approve items twenty-five and twenty-six. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-five and twenty-six approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven-eight, due to no meeting being held on September fifth, twenty-seventeen, agenda items twenty-seven and twenty-eight shall be laid over three weeks to September twelfth, September twelfth, twenty-seventeen for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven-eight, due to no meeting being held on September fifth, twenty-seventeen, agenda item twenty-nine shall be laid over three weeks to September twelfth, twenty-seventeen. Item thirty, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Echo Storage Investments, Inc. to allow scrap and salvage services in an H.I. district located at three-seven-zero-one Dahlman Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty is today. Proponents, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is Danielle Dring. I'm an attorney at Smiths Luskey. Our address is eighty-seven-twelve West Dodge Road, Suite four-hundred. I'm here as a proponent, but I would ask that this matter be laid over to the September twelfth meeting so that we may have a second public meeting with the residents in that area and expand our invitation to all of the districts in Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Do you wish to speak or just be acknowledged?
They're going to lay it over.
We're going to lay it over for, we're going to lay it over for three weeks in it.
So they can meet with you again.
So that they can get a chance to meet with you again. Come on, come on down if you want to, if you want to speak.
Steve McConnell, thirty-five fifteen South Thirty-Fifth Ave., Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-oh-five. They've met with us already on it. I just wanted, we're having a hard time getting everybody here, because this is the fourth time we've been here. We're having trouble getting everybody, getting off of work for these meetings, but I just wanted to tell the council members what we felt, if I can talk about it.
All right.
I've been there sixty-one years, lived on the same block. As time passed, I bought up eight of the houses in the neighborhood, cleaned them all up, fixed it all, put retaining walls up. When Mr. Paul Tanny bought the landfill, when we were there, there was no landfill, no nothing. After we grew up in junior high, it became a salvage auto parts. Then they turn around and they perch, they turned it into a limited landfill, construction debris only. We had no problem with that, other than the smell of gypsum and a lot of trouble with the smell and the streets getting muddy and stuff, the traffic. So when they wanted to put in a pursuable landfill for garbage, we definitely opposed it because of the smell. I'm only a hundred and ninety feet away from this landfill. By the way, the crow flies, there is a railroad crossing down in there, but we've totally against it because of the smell. They say there's going to be no smell. I come up with, if you walk out to the garbage truck and throw garbage in it, you can smell the truck for a half a block. If they're bringing all these trucks in and out all day long, you're going to smell the garbage smell all day long. They say they're going to remove it all at the end of the day, but you're still going to smell the garbage trucks coming in and out. We're a neighborhood of twelve people. We're, my housing on my side is heavy industrial also. I was issued permits by the City of Omaha to build a house there, build a garage, and maintain the other properties. And then they come up with the master plan from the city that if something would happen to any of my properties, that they won't let us rebuild, which feels very unfair. But at the same time, I'm here for one reason. I spent about ten thousand dollars of my own money asphalting the road up there. I maintain the roads, I do all the snow removal, the city does it, and they do it in a pretty quick amount of time, but I still have a big machine and I do all of it to get the people in and out, because it's on a hill, steep hills. And I've done all my asphalting, contracted that out, because the city can't help us, because there's something to do with the taxes of when it was built. It was, so I maintain the road. I've maintained it for forty years now, but the last time I asphalted, it cost me ten thousand, and it's going to go up, but I'm just trying to keep our neighborhood clean and quiet. We can hear the machines running over there. I don't know if the council members had a chance to go into the neighborhood. If they didn't, I got pictures, if you'd like them, but our biggest thing is, it's where I've been for sixty-one years, and all of a sudden, they're going to put a landfill in that's only, by here, the hearings here, thirteen to fifteen percent they're going to do. All they're doing is taking a few of the other places that are getting this recyclables. So I don't see where it's going to help. And for the traffic on Dahlman Ave., it's going to make it higher. If there's a train stop down there, it makes it worse. There's, there's nothing good about it, because we're running, it's going to be a dirty, it's going to be a dirty landfill, what they call a dirty landfill, because they're not up in the thirty, forty, and fifty percent. It's just enough that Tom can purchase the permit, because he knows by buying the permit, he can sell the place for double the money to a company in Pennsylvania, and so it's going to be a profit. We don't have a problem with his work that he's doing there now, other than the smell of the drywall, the gypsum smell, and he's run it, but the hole's getting full. He wants to retire. He's told us all that he wants to retire. So the people in Pennsylvania says if you can get the permit for this pursuable landfill, I'd be interested in purchasing. I, I just don't think that that's right, especially in a neighborhood where we live. And I've taken well care of it the best I can, pretty much on my own, and my boys, and my family, and I just don't want to lose it for smell, and, and I ain't doing it for profit. Mine's passed on to the boys. I'm trying to keep our area clean, and that's about what I have. Do you guys have any questions for me, or?
No, I think, I think, I think just your testimony is good.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't really want to have it held over, because we're having a hard time getting here. We've already talked to them, and we, we know everything. I got the books on it, so if, I'll leave it up to you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Name it out just for the record, please.
Brett Fetter, thirty-six zero-two South Thirty-first Street, J.D. Circle Line. We own three lots there, and we're small business. We've been there for thirty, thirty years. Just recently sold a farm down in south, or south of Plath Smith, and to keep the small business open. My grandma's older, and she has Alzheimer's, and this is our place of business that we've raised, that I'm trying to raise a family, I'm trying to provide for my family. There are two lots across the street from JD's that's all grassed-in area, and for my kids, where I have grown up playing it, playing there for the last thirty years, and I have horseshoe pits on, on the outside, and I have five horseshoe teams that come in, and they love the small little area, the others railroad tracks and stuff, and I'm just really against the smell, because I want to come there and I want to go across the street, play with my kids in my own private little area, and not have to worry about the smell and worry about the rodents and everything that a landfill would bring. And just, it's just, this is where my heart is, and I wouldn't have done, I wouldn't have sold our farm to keep the small business open, to keep my grandma, to provide for her, knowing all that. And I just think it's critical to my business, because a small business in that neighborhood is, number one, it's hard, and I just think that even takes away from my customers even more when you want to go outside and the horseshoe pit and have, you know, sit there with your friend, have a drink, you know, after a long day at work, and sit out there. You don't want to smell that, you know, and I just, I'm just trying to make it as a small-time business owner, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, does the proponent wish any rebuttal time?
I would like some rebuttal time, but I'm going to echo again my request to have this laid over. These, these members who came to speak today, they are members of this same community in this neighborhood. I do want to extend this invitation for a public meeting out to all neighborhoods in Omaha, not just the one where there are residences close to here. We were in front of the Planning Board two or three times to discuss this, to hammer out the details regarding the schedule, when this operation would be open, to ensure that we aren't interfering with early morning hours when people are sleeping, so that we're not there late at night disturbing people's activities. And we would also like to say that this is not a landfill. This was echoed by a couple of the people who came up. Mr. Fetter and Mr. McConnell both mentioned the word landfill. This is not going to be a landfill. It is presently a construction and demolition debris landfill, but we're not going to maintain that same landfill classification. So I would like to have this council meeting laid over for a vote until September twelfth, so that we can kind of clarify this with some of the property owners in that area, including the small business owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Just want to make sure that if this does get laid over, we, we keep the public hearing open so that other people can come and comment. Want to make sure that, you know, we appreciate the neighbors who are here today and know that their comments are on the record, and we'll take that all into consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I guess my question is, you said you wanted to bring other neighborhoods in also, so they weren't notified in the beginning of what was going on here?
We notified neighbors within three hundred and five hundred feet. Would like to expand that, just to make sure that everybody else would be in, excuse me, make sure everybody would be invited as well.
I've heard from the neighbors outside of that area, and nobody's in favor of it, so I'm not going to be in agreement to lay this over. I was actually here at a Planning Board meeting before I got elected on vacation time, so I know how hard this is for, and the group keeps getting smaller, that's here, against it. So I, I don't see what you're going to give them or tell the neighbors about that they don't already know. I've heard from them all.
Mr. Jerome.
Yeah, I guess in my time here, I may not like an application that's exceedingly rare if the representative for the applicant asks for layover that I don't support it or another or another council member. There are a couple of exceptions to that, but Ms. Drang has asked for that courtesy, and I don't think it's gonna change the minds. In fact, I know it's not gonna change the mind of, of the opponents, because they've shared with us that, that it's not gonna change their minds. But from my perspective, it's the tour that I took today that the applicant has said additional time would allow them to address some of what I observed. Because what I observed today was a mess. Going down to the site, seeing it from Dahlman, and pulling into the, to turn around in the driveway. It really is unsightly in, in many respects, and it makes it more challenging for me to believe that it'll be cleaned up with a new operation. So the three weeks, I will be back down there before we vote, and to see whether it's cleaned up. As I factor in how I'm gonna vote on this, I don't know yet. I, I, I will remember, and your opposition is made a part of the record. So if any of you who testified here today cannot come back, your, your opposition is in the record. Anyone who was not here today, but can make September twelfth, who wishes to come down in opposition because of the way the motion is structured, to keep the public hearing open, they could come back down and testify again. As, I mean, testify if they didn't make it here today. So I will be supporting the layover, but want the applicant to know it's a professional courtesy, and to allow your client the opportunity to demonstrate some, I guess, more substantial efforts to try to clean up what really looks to be like a mess that's visible plainly from the road, so that's, I just thought I'd let you know that.
Mr. Jarom, thank you. We do intend on submitting a new site plan that would be more detailed. And I will make that very clear to our client, that they need to clean the property.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to layover item thirty-three weeks. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, five to two.
Thank you.
Item thirty-one, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Magnum Fulkostrom to allow general retail sales in a G.I. district located at two-five-one-zero North Eighty-fifth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today. Proponents, please. Saying none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item thirty-one. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-one approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven H, due to no meeting being held September fifth, twenty-seventeen, agenda item thirty-two shall be laid over three weeks to September twelfth, twenty-seventeen, for publication and public hearing. Item thirty-three, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Early Bird LLC, doing business as Early Bird Bob's Donuts, three-eight-two-four Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Mike Kelly, just a second here. Twenty-eight oh-four South Eighty-seventh Avenue. Forty-five years at another location, it's hard to get used to. I'm here representing Early Bird, Jamie Burrow. This is a concept of a breakfast and brunch, but they would also have mimosa, Bloody Mary, the breakfast, traditional breakfast drinks. It's in Blackstone, should be a great addition to that area. Mr. Burrow was not able, he's, he's got Louis Wine Dive, former Husker. He could not be here today, but he trusted me for some reason, I don't know how to explain it to you. And I would try to answer your questions, my half.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, we, we had a little discussion, Mr. Kelly, about this application this morning. We couldn't decide what you'd wanna have a, a drink with a donut for, but you're saying it's the brunch primarily that...
You know, breakfast and donuts and drinks. What the heck, you know? I've sold it with ice cream, I don't see any problem with it. I had to be in Lincoln at the Liquor Commission.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-three. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-three approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-four, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Kojisan LLC, doing business as Yoshi Tomo, six-zero-zero-nine Maple Street. Ace Communication from the City Clerk requesting a one-week layover to August twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, for revised notification and to continue the public hearing.
Moving and seconded to, to layover item thirty-four for one week and continue the public hearing. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item, the motion to continue the public hearing and lay it over for one week is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-five, a request to appoint Alexander Herman as manager of Rare Hospitality Management LLC to their following Class I liquor license locations. Longhorn Steakhouse, number five-four-zero-one, thirty-fourty, South One Hundred and Forty-third Plaza, and Longhorn Steakhouse, number five-four-two-two, seven-four-two-five Dodge Street, Suite one-oh-three.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please.
I'll turn it. Representing Longhorn Steakhouse, both, both locations there. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item thirty-five. No lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-five approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-six, a request to appoint June Larmour as manager of Quick Shop Inc. to their following Class D liquor license locations. Quick Shop, number six-fourty-three-six-zero-six-Love North Street. Quick Shop, number six-five-two-three-two-two-Q Street. And Quick Shop, number six-six-seven-four-eight-five-five-L Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, June Larmour. I'm a district manager for Quick Shop. Ten-six-six-five Charles Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-four. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, June, if you could come back to the mic, I just have a question about thirty-six-oh-six-Love North. That, is that the most held-up store in your, in your system?
No, actually, we're getting ready to remodel it. It'll, it'll start, I, I believe we're doing the one on Forty-second and Harrison. They're doing the plans right now, and then we'll be doing that one.
It, it, somehow you're incorporating a better security effort into that location, because I cannot tell you how many times I've seen the reports, whether it's in the newspaper, on TV, the neighborhood chat boards, that, that you were held up at that location. I just feel so bad for your, your business, the people who work there, who go through that. Wondered if, if you were addressing that.
You know, it's always a constant concern, the safety. We've, we've dealt with some tragedies lately. We had a shooting in Lincoln. What I can tell you is, we have a very good security system. We have things in place that we try to keep the employees safe. Unfortunately, if people are, are bent on doing bad things, they're gonna do that. We try to be good community neighbors. We try to teach the employees safety and awareness. There's, there's no plans, I, I don't wanna be dishonest, there's no plans to do that. We have increased our store employees at the store, yet I don't know that that necessarily solves it either. That's the best I can answer your question.
Well, I, I wanna wish you, you well on your, your remodel and your manager. Hopefully, it's a promotion. And if you need any additional support from the Police Department in terms of outreach and crime prevention in the neighborhood, you know, just please feel free to reach out.
Absolutely, and I will say that the Police Department there, they are great to us. I mean, they are great to us. They are constantly in the store, helping us out. The more presence we have there, the better we are, so.
Great, well, good luck to you. Move to approve.
Moving and seconded to approve item thirty-six. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-six approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-seven, a request to appoint Nicholas Wernicki as manager of Quick Shop Inc. to their following Class D liquor license locations. Quick Shop, number six-two-two-nine-five-four-five-Q Street. Quick Shop, number six-two-three-three-one-zero-three-North Two Hundred and Fourth Street. Quick Shop, number six-six-zero-nine-six-zero-six-F Street. Quick Shop, number six-six-five-one-five-five-five-six-Londo Street. And Quick Shop, number six-six-eight-six-eight-four-five-South One Hundred and Sixty-seventh Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
All right, I'm Nicholas Wernicki. Good to be back. I was just here about a month ago. I'm the other district manager with Quick Shop. June and I are, we split it. Anyways, I'm just here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item thirty-seven. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda, in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers thirty-eight through forty-nine were held on August fifteenth, twenty-seventeen. Moving and seconded to approve those items. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items thirty-eight through forty-nine are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers fifty through fifty-nine are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, your address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I understand we're going to take item fifty-seven off of consent. Public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. Somebody's gonna... We're voting on items fifty through fifty-six, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine. Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jarom. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items fifty through fifty-nine minus fifty-seven are approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-seven, a resolution to direct the City Planning Department to compile and report information regarding the approval and progress of redevelopment projects in which the City of Omaha participates through the Division of Ed Valerium Taxes and shall present an annual report to the City Council on or before May first for projects approved in the previous calendar year.
Mr. Pauls.
As, as we all know, a number of TIF projects come in front of this committee on a, of this council on a regular basis. So I thought it would be, it would behoove us to make sure that the public understands what TIF is and the proposal that I have in front of you. And to help clarify that, I'm gonna ask Cassie Paven to come down and sort of give us a primer on TIF, the basics, and then I will ask Jennifer to talk about the resolution.
Cassie Paven, Mayor's Office. Councilwoman Pauls, thanks for the opportunity. I think you've heard me speak several times on TIF, or TIF one-oh-one, as some people have called it. But tax increment financing is a financing tool that we utilize in community redevelopment areas. You see several projects that come before you, and I say several, because it, it does feel like we have a lot of them. I think on average, you know, twenty to twenty-five, that always fluctuates depending on the economy. But essentially what TIF is, it's a way for projects to get financed. And it's an act that was created by the state of Nebraska. It's governed by community development law. There's certain eligible expenses that you can use for it, but in, in very, very basic elementary terms, it essentially fronts the taxes that you would have if you completed the project towards the development, to allow the development to happen. Now, the property taxes are then repaid, and that pays off that note, which in the case of Omaha, the developer is required to actually go and secure that note. So it's not the city issuing the note, it's actually another financial institution which the developer's then on the hook for. So we utilize this. It's a very effective tool that we utilize. I think you've, you've heard me say, I know I've testified pretty much every year, the last four or five years, on tax increment financing down in the legislature. But it really truly is our only redevelopment tool that we, we have available to us. It's successful, we know that. In terms of what your resolution is before, you know, it's something that I do know City Planning was already compiling and working on. As we continue to see legislation brought forward in the legislature, there's currently another interim study on the auditor's audit that was released last December, that I'll be testifying on on October sixth. It, it's a very important tool for us to use, often misunderstood, and, because it's complex. It really truly is complex in how it's used, but we're happy to help out however we can. We think it's very valuable information, and answer any other questions you might have.
I think your answer was in on, to the question I'm going to ask, but so many people I talk to, they say, "Well, gee, Rich, you're just giving this developer the money." And could you explain that we don't just write the check out?
Yeah, we don't write the check out. The city does not just take a checkbook and write a check out to Mr. Developer for however much their TIF note is. The developer is actually required to go to a lending institution and secure that note. So the city and the rest of the taxpayers are actually not on the hook for that. It is solely the developer of that property that's on the hook for that.
And this is one of a number of a hundred different ways we have to provide incentive, or is this one of few?
I would tell you, it's one of few. We probably have the most conservative TIF law in the United States. I think we're one of two states now, that is, at fifteen years. A lot of will go twenty to twenty-five, have some other complexities to it that maybe are a little bit different than what we have. But in terms of what is in our toolkit, I mean, it's one of few that are actually in our toolkit to assist in promoting development, particularly in areas that, that need it the most. I mean, one of probably the most important projects that I can think of that truly is making a massive neighborhood impact would be the Highlander Project that Seventy-five North is taking on in North Omaha. That project, without the use of tax increment financing, would have never happened. Midtown Crossing, with, when that project came along, without the use of tax increment financing, that project would have never happened. And look at the ripple effect that we've seen today. And actually, one of the other projects that you approved, the Blackstone Corner is a project that's a series of other projects in that area that is helping raise the ship up in that area, and we do see a ripple effect. We do see that go through. And so, we know that using this tool to help drive investment in areas raises all ships.
Okay, then, why do some of my friends in the legislature, what's, what's their issue then? Because this is brought up on a regular basis.
It's consistently brought up on a regular basis. I think last year, there were six, maybe even seven TIF bills. I think there was one day that one senator had three TIF bills that he had introduced to really restrict and limit, and then there were some other bills there. I, I think it's a couple of different folds, just my observations. I think part of it is, there is a confusion that it's taking away money from other taxing jurisdictions, particularly the schools. But as you well know, you can't lose money you've never had. So if the development never happened, you would never have that money to begin with. In addition, we also know that when the project goes in, that ripple effect that I was previously talking about, those surrounding properties see a rise. So there's, there's some of that. There's the perception that it affects the state school formula, and it's taking away millions of dollars across the state. So I think there's that. There is the perception that it is just writing a blank check to developers, which is, you all know, that's really not the case. It's very limited on what you can do, and a lot of it is truly public improvements that it's, it's helping assist with, that otherwise, we would have to figure out how to pay for ourselves with some other funding mechanism. And some people just don't like taxpayer incentives going into private developments.
Let me ask you, now, you serve on the TIF?
I do serve on the TIF Committee.
Now, how many are on that? Or who's?
The TIF Committee is made up of, and I'm probably gonna misquote this number, but I believe it's nine, eight or nine. It would be two representatives from the Mayor's Office, the City Attorney. There's two representatives from Finance, two representatives from Public Works, the Planning Director, and then Bridget Hadley, and then Don Seaton, who also kind of manages the projects, sit in as those projects come forward to the TIF Committee. So, I mean, we probably have one of the most thorough review processes in the entire state. In, in fact, as part of my other role, I'm now the president of the Nebraska Economic Developers Association. And as TIF has come up, I've had a lot of calls on, how do you guys set up your process? What do you do? What's that look like? So we've been able to share our guidelines, our application, all of that with other communities that are taking a look at, and that group is also trying to work with other communities across the state to really provide additional education and outreach on this subject, because it is important. And I, I think this is a proactive step that we can definitely show when the next round of TIF legislation, which is undoubtedly going to come, that we are really being transparent, we're being proactive and taking steps to, to get out as much information as we possibly can about these projects.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Jennifer, could I have you just come forth? Again, thank you, Cassie. Jennifer Taylor, would you, since you're the author of this resolution, would you just sort of tell us what this resolution does, so that those people out watching can have some idea?
Sure. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. What the resolution does is essentially directs the Planning Department to prepare an annual report. I worked with Bridget Hadley and the Planning Director on the information that's included in here, to make sure it was information that, that we could provide, and accurately provide on an annual basis, and also done so in a, in a timely fashion. So what would happen is, on an annual basis, by May first of every year, a report would be prepared for the previous year's projects. And the information that would be included would be the number of projects that were done, the total amount of tax and financing that was awarded, the total amount of project costs. The idea behind that, trying to make sure that we understand, if you have twenty-five projects and you award sixty million dollars in incentives, but you have, what comes out of that to be five or six or seven hundred million dollars in projects, you get a perspective on, on exactly the kind of work that's being done. Furthermore, we also wanna look at the kind of, the number of notes that are being paid off on an annual basis. I think that's something that's important. It's a piece that people miss oftentimes, that every year, projects that were approved ten, twelve, fifteen years ago pay off. And then that increment, that amount that was going towards to repay that loan that was given that developer, now goes back to the taxing jurisdictions.
taxing jurisdictions. For example, First National Bank paid off last year, and that's a big one. Also included in there is the percent of land within the corporate limits of the city of Omaha that's designated as blighted. And that's just an information piece for us to know and keep track of, because we are limited in the amount of land we can designate as blighted. Omaha is limited to thirty-five percent of their corporate area. So the information that's provided would give you a perspective on the projects that were approved the year before, how the program is working, what is being paid off, and exactly how it affects our city overall. But I also made sure to write it so that it was indicated that it's not limited to this information alone. It gives the planning department, and it gives the city an opportunity to also highlight and bring forth other information about the tax and financing program that may be useful, beneficial, not only to the city council, but also to the public at large. So it's an opportunity, not only for us to make sure that we are being transparent and informative about how this program and this incentive is used, but also how it impacts our city. Catalyst projects, like Cassie talked about, it's an opportunity to make sure that we're highlighting the catalyst effect that tax and financing projects has on the rest of our city. So it's an opportunity for us to do that as well.
And this information is already out there. They're just, the staff, which is basically organized, is what you're telling me?
Yes. All the information that's included here is basically publicly available information. It's just assembled in a way that is more easily digestible, and also does a better job of indicating how our program works.
I want to thank you for the effort you put forth on this, because I do think this is something that will enlighten. I think people will be surprised of what it costs, but what we get in return. I think, again, I thank you.
Motion.
So move.
Second, roll call. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I just think, too, if this report is done annually and it's put on our agenda, and the whole world will see it and have access to it, and then if there's a presentation they choose to make, or we just place it on file, but then it's accessible to everybody. And so a lot of the questions that get asked and the misinformation or disinformation that gets put out there can be easily refuted. And state senators who might be interested can just access it through a click of their mouse. So it'll only help, I think, make this information more public. So thank you for your resolution, and thank you for your work in drafting it, and the planning department administration for putting it all together.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item fifty-seven. There are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item sixty, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, the Small and Emerging Small Business Program, to modify the program's definitions, certification, criteria, and enforcement provisions. A is an amendment of the hold dated July thirty-first, twenty seventeen. B is communication submitted by Mayor Gene Stothart. C is communication submitted by the Public Works Department. D is an amendment of the hold dated August fifteenth, twenty seventeen. E is an amendment of the hold dated August seventeenth, twenty seventeen.
The public hearing on this has been held. We need to do a floor amendment first before we, and attach that to Amendment E, and then approve Amendment E.
I'll move the floor amendment E that adds Washington.
That adds the word "and." It's been moved and seconded to, for the amendment, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment is approved, seven to zero. It's going to be the amendment of the hold. Yep. E is amended, yep.
E is amended.
It's E.
E is amended.
E, it's E, yep. No, we're just going to approve E.
Just going to approve E. E is the overall.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So you need to say "as amended," is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second? Moving and seconded to approve the amendment of the hold, E. No further lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item is passed, seven to zero. Item sixty-one, a special ordinance, allowing a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures on certain lots in the city of Omaha, Group Number twenty-seventeen-dash-zero-one, is an amendment requested by the planning department.
Move the amendment.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes. Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item sixty-one is approved as amended, seven to zero. Item sixty-two, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with E&amp;A Consulting Group, Inc., to provide professional services on OPW five-three-one-nine-four, being the Street Improvement District, six-eight-eight-zero, located south, One Hundred and Sixty-fourth Street, Poppleton Avenue, to Peterson Drive Project, in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
They're motioning to layover for three weeks. Four weeks?
You want four weeks?
Is that, is that your motion? Moving and seconded to layover item sixty-two for four weeks. There are no lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item sixty-three, an ordinance to accept the bid from American Courier Corporation to provide delivery services between twelve public libraries, as well as other designated pickup and delivery sites throughout the city of Omaha metropolitan area for a period of one year, and to authorize annual payments of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-three is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-four, an ordinance approving the renewal of maintenance agreement number one with the Nebraska Department of Roads for the routine maintenance of segments of the city street system, which are also extensions of state highways within city limits, and to authorize the reimbursement of funds in the amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for the period of January one, twenty-seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item sixty-five, an ordinance to approve the Nebraska Crime Commission, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Office of Violence Prevention Grant Award in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars during the project period of July one, twenty-seventeen, to June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen, to provide funding to develop a web-based gang database for the Omaha Police Department Gang Unit and a subsequent program evaluation.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule seven H, due to no meeting being held, September fifth, twenty seventeen, the third reading and public hearings on agenda items sixty-six through sixty-eight shall be held on September twelfth, twenty seventeen. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven C, the public hearings on agenda items sixty-nine and seventy shall be held on the second reading. Item seventy-two, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Joanne Bemis to the Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term from August twenty-second, twenty seventeen, to August twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item seventy-two. No lights, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Palermo, okay. Festerson. Harding. Jerem. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at three-thirty.